Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
For everyone who doesn't know, my name is Tanaya Cruz and I'm your superintendent. Today, we are here to discuss the state of our education system and the candidates who hope to bring new ideas and change to our school districts. We as students understand that developing a plan to move schools in the right direction is easier said than done. As scholars of CHISD, we believe the first challenge lies in identifying the underlying problems keeping students from learning today. This challenging part is because the problems may change considerably depending on who is receiving them. Are they students, parents, educators, or lawmakers? Students need help understanding the significant issues of budgets, district operating costs, and bond measures. Instead, we worry about things that affect us every day in school such as our safety, quality of education, and the social, emotional, and physical environment we are surrounded by. We will spend time today with you candidates addressing these issues and asking for your thoughts. At this time, we will not have each candidate introduce themselves. You will each have two minutes to give a brief introduction of yourself. We will start with you, Dr. Singleton.
All right. Let me first say thank you for the invitation. My name is Dr. Lester Singleton and I run for school board place seven. I have 24 years of education leadership with seven years being the principal. So I want to bring my expertise, my education background to Cedar Hill ISD so I can be an integral part of unlocking every long-horned potential for success. Matter of fact, I grew up in a state that was second lowest in the educational spectrum. From elementary to high school, I had teachers who really didn't care about us. They didn't care if we graduated, they didn't care if we learned the curriculum. It was just bad. It was the worst, second worst in the entire United States of America. But our parents would not allow us to cater to that narrative. So as I got older, I decided I'm going back to school because I never want a scholar to go through an educated environment the way I went through. So I went back and got a master's secondary education, I got a master's in educational leadership. Then I became a principal. I spent seven years as a principal. I moved students that came to me that were two grade levels with a year and a half, they had moved up on grade level. So I want to bring that same expertise to this district to make sure that scholars here do not face what I face and get a quality education. That is why I run, I'll run it for Cedar Hill ISD place seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will have Ayana Cabrera Cook.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having this. My name is Ayana Cabrera Cook and I am running for Cedar Hill School Board Trustee, place six. Who am I? I am currently a parent and have been a parent in the district since 2009. I have a sophomore in college, I have a sophomore at the high school, and I have a sixth grader at Bessie Coleman Middle School. I'm a parent first. I have volunteered in this district since 2009. I was the PTA council president for two years and before that, I was president of High Point Elementary where I spent 14 years as a parent and then transitioned to Bessie Coleman and then to the high school. I'm running for school board because I have learned from the inside out. I have volunteered by sitting in classrooms so I see what our teachers have gone through. I may not be an educator, but I see and empathize with our educators and things that they're missing. The other thing, the other reason why I'm running is because I know that parents, there are parents out there that need to be empowered to become engaged in the education process with our students. What we're running into is that parents are sending their children to the schoolhouse and saying, "You do all of it." Well, I think us as a district, we need to do a little bit, something different like empowering our parents through our parent university with a curriculum that we could celebrate them once they've learned how to do certain things. A lot of things have changed since we went to school. New math, things of those, things of that nature. So parents kind of shy away from helping and say, "Let the school do it." Well, one of the things that I think is our students will excel if we have parent involvement and engagement. That's the bottom line. Student achievement comes from at home and I don't do this for me, I do this for we. Other students who don't have parents that have time like I did when they were younger, they need me in the building, they need us in the building, they need more parents in the building. So, thank you so much and my name again is Ayana Cabrera Cook.
Thank you. I know I got to do with that math question, huh? And now we have Dr. Haygood.
Hi, I'm Dr. Quetta Haygood and I am running for place six of the Cedar Hill ISD school board. And many people have asked me as well, and I can stand up because I plan on sitting down, but people have asked me as well, "Why am I running for school board?" When I currently have a full-time job as a high school assistant principal and we have extended duties as assigned. So only thing I can think of with all sincerity is that I find fulfillment and purpose in serving others. And I have been serving others for 32 years in education in all types of capacities. I started out as a paraprofessional in a middle school special education classroom. Then I went to become a teacher and got my teaching certification and became a high school teacher for the past 14 years in a special education classroom in which I taught all subjects. I taught all levels of disabilities from gifted and talented to the lowest functioning cognitive levels of learning disabilities. I also then went and decided to go into leadership and I became an assistant principal as well as a elementary school principal and I did that for 18 years and I'm currently working in school administration. But not only that, is that I do understand with the fulfillment and the purpose that I feel for serving others is that I want to continue to do that in the capacity that I can do that with this district. I believe in public education. My own kids have gone through public education within this school district. I have a son who is in the US military right now. He came through elementary or middle school as well as went to the ninth grade center that is now changed, but he also went to the high school and he was in the JROTC program and now he is currently serving in the US Army as well. And I have a daughter who just graduated last year. She went through Lake Ridge Elementary as well as Collegiate Elementary and Collegiate Prep and Pathway and then she went up to the high school and she graduated last year with her associate's degree from the Early College Academy at the high school because she wanted to be on campus with the band to play in the band. She's currently now playing in the band at Prairie View. But I continue to want to serve here because I know that my students have also went through here and my children and I hope that you will continue to allow me to show my leadership and my capacities to help out with this district.
Thank you. Okay, so now I'll be introducing our superintendent to the roundtable. So I'll be going in this order. First, we have Brooke Edmund. Give her our applause. Then we have Bailey Francis. And I see Lily Bethia. Each student will be asked in one designated question for a total of five questions. Thank you all for coming tonight. I will be starting by drawing the candidate's name for each round to see who will answer first. And by the way, each candidate will also have two minutes to answer the question. So we will be starting with Dr. Singleton. So let's dive into the question.
Okay, so the first question is coming from me and it says, "How important are fine arts and extracurricular activities such as athletics to overall education? How should they be funded?"
Well, let's start with the last question first. They should be funded from the general funds. Here's why. When we involve kids in the fine arts, you know, the music, dancing, as you can see, the extracurricular activities, the athletic, what we're doing is building a well-rounded student. In order for students to function appropriately and effectively in the changing environment, the changing world, they need to know, have a diverse talent and not just focus on one aspect of their education, but that exposes them to a lot. I'll take for example, when I was in Dallas Baptist University, working on my undergrad, I didn't care about fine arts. Being a black man raised in Mississippi, I knew nothing about fine arts. And I took a fine arts class at Dallas Baptist and you know what happened? It changed my life. It really did. I began to look at, I can look at pictures now and see the sensor and how it stands out on the canvas and it changed my life. And when I was a principal, there was one thing I did. I made sure my student went out to Dallas Baptist, went out to the fine arts studio downtown and just explore different aspects to be a well-rounded student and they just loved it. Then there was also incorporated dance. Matter of fact, my daughter is a dance teacher out in Houston ISD and she loved it. She told me she was three years old and she had me dancing.
Thank you. Our next candidate to answer the question will be Dr. Haygood.
And the next question will be coming from me.
Oh. The same question.
Yes.
Okay. So I feel that it is very important to have extracurricular activities involved in school districts as well as within each school. Stand up so you can hear me. I do believe it's very important to have extracurricular activities such as even athletics and for the overall education because having extracurricular activities allows students to also be involved. Research says that when students are involved in school, they are usually more successful and they will complete school. And then not only that, it gives them an opportunity to socialize and interact with others and also it allows them to be able to pull out skill sets within them that are creative and that they are able to perform and they are able to build up the confidence in order to interact with others. Having those type of extracurricular activities also gives students the opportunity to manage their time, know how they could study, how they can get involved and still take care of their books, but also that they can take care of what they need to do if they have a future in doing something else besides just the educational field. I know that when my daughter was attending the collegiate middle school, they did not have the extracurricular activities involved in her curriculum in her day. And so it was something that the principal had fought for, for them to have at the collegiate level because they didn't participate in the extracurricular activities. And once they offered that for the students and it was banned that she got involved in and that was something that she had never been exposed to. And because she got exposed to that, it just really, just lit a fire up under her and that fire just allowed her to have the more confidence and get involved in things that she wouldn't, would have never really got involved in. And same thing with the JROTC with my son. He chose to go into JROTC and when he got involved in that, it made a big difference in what he's doing now because he was exposed to that within the school district. So I think it's very essential to have extracurricular activities and how it should be funded. I agree with Dr. Singleton as well.
Thank you. All right, thank you so much again. I'm going to start with the end of the question. How it should be funded? By any means necessary. General funds, bonds, anything that could keep our children available to learn. I have a daughter that was in the band as well. She went to Langston on a band scholarship. It has value. I have a daughter now, is a sophomore. She's played volleyball, she's played tennis, she's on the JV basketball team. She ran track and she had to have good grades to do it. Why else would you not want your child to have extracurricular activities? Because those coaches and those band directors do not allow you to perform and to do anything if those grades are not right. So not only do they get to develop because I'm that mom that's like, "Get it, push through it, we can't quit, you committed to it," it helps them move forward as a person and develops into a young adult so that when they go away to school, if that's what their plan is, they actually have a sense of independence. Because guess what? I can't get on the court with them, I can't get on the field and play, they get to travel, they get to see things. My daughter went to Langston because of Cedar Hill ISD. She went to Langston on a scholarship and got to perform in the Mardi Gras parade, three days of parades. You can see the world in education, but you can see the world when you're in sports and in education. So, I mean, in sports and in band. So I believe that we should fully support it because it develops a full human. Thank you.
So now I'm going to shake up the bag for your next candidate to answer the next question. Okay, so the next question will be first answered by Dr. Haygood.
Okay, so now I will be asking you all the question. What are your thoughts about vouchers? How do you see Cedar Hill ISD responding to the competition of charter and private schools in the area?
Great question. So my thoughts about vouchers as well as the charter schools that's in the Cedar Hill area is that, hey, Cedar Hill ISD, we have to make sure that we are on our A game, that we have to step up our game to make sure that we are offering programs and courses and choices for parents and students to get involved in. Within the surrounding districts, there are many innovative types of courses and programs that is available for those students and we need to also continue to have that so that we can compete with those other districts. But not only that, so that our students can stay here. We want our students and our families to stay here in Cedar Hill. We want them to come, be able to move here because of the things that's offered within the district. We want families to grow here and we want people to come and want to work here. We want high-quality educators to come here because we have these kind of programs here. And so therefore, I feel that if we can keep up our game and step up our game, then we can also compete with those surrounding districts who offer those kind of programs. So we have to do that here so that we can make that available for our students and our scholars.
Thank you. Our next candidate will be... Dr. Singleton.
All right. My first question is, what is my thought about vouchers? I hate vouchers. Here's why. It takes away money from Cedar Hill ISD. Same with private schools. We already facing a fund shortage from the state of Texas. So we don't need, we don't need to lose any more money. We need every dollar we can get to effectively educate our scholars. As far as competition for charter school, what we have to do? We have to continue to communicate, excuse me, to our parents what we have to offer our students. For one, our collegiate pathway. Great. We are excelling there, but I think we can continue to do a better job of communicating that school to our constituent. And we also have the STEAM and STEM, we have the technology immersion, we have a lot of things. We just have to make sure we are disseminating that information out to our parents and we can, charter schools are not going anywhere. So we're going to have to step up our game and let parents know, we got quality teachers, quality scholars, and a lot to offer them right here in our district.
And lastly. All right, what are my thoughts about vouchers? I think vouchers are only valuable if all schools are funded equally. There's equitable funding for all schools. So, so there won't be a need for vouchers if all schools were funded equally. So in short, I don't like vouchers, okay? I don't like them for a number of reasons, but for the most part, it is simple that vouchers weren't made for certain people. They weren't made for people of a certain income bracket. They're made for people who can afford to already send their kids to private school. So we need to be mindful about those things when people are talking about vouchers and school choice. If all schools were funded correctly, then you could choose from greatness of things. Cedar Hill is great even without things, without a lot of things. We have not been properly funded for a very long time, but we made bricks with no hay forever. I know that for a fact. Now, how do you see CHISD responding to the competition of charter schools? We got to stay ready. Everything we do, we have to stay ready, we have to excel in what we currently have and then some. Hopefully, the bond that we have right now will pass so that we can get some more academic curriculum, some more of the things that you guys, you guys don't get. The people who come after you will get this if this passes. So hopefully, we get to see that our schools will be ready because guess what? Charter schools can send those kids back to CHISD. So we always have to be ready for them to return home. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to shake the bag again. And our candidate will be answering this next question. Well, give me Dr. Haygood.
I'll be asking the next question. If elected, what are the critical accomplishments of the board during your years of service?
If elected, I think the critical accomplishments will be making sure that the bond is passed, also that our teachers are being competent for what they do and that we have high-quality experts in our classrooms, but they're getting paid for that and they have competitive salaries. But also that our students are college, career, and life-ready and that we are able to close those achievement gaps by offering the type of curriculum and rigor that those students need and that they can thrive and they can compete in a global society as well. But also making sure that the community rallies with us because I know that when you are able to have skilled students and skilled workers, that allows our community to grow, it allows our community to prosper and to develop. And we can do that by educating the students with what we have and increasing that level of education with them. And so I believe that with those accomplishments as a school board trustee, I would like to definitely partner with, with the trustees to make sure that we are doing what we need to do for students, that we are committed to making sure that students are first and that their needs are being met, social, emotional as well, and that we are able to accomplish where that we have a premier district for students to want to come to as well as families to move into here.
Thank you. Our next candidate will be... Ms. Cabrera Cook.
Thank you again. If elected, what are the critical accomplishments of the board during my years? There are a couple of things that I would want to do. I'd want to build a strong relationship with my peers, with the city council. I would want to have a good relationship because you can't be a premier city without a premier school district. Second thing I would want to do, I spoke on in my introduction, is build a parent university. And I said it a little bit, but just a little bit more detail on it. I would want to start with parents who want to be active but don't necessarily have the time to do it, where we could show them how 15 minutes here, 15 minutes there adds up. Imagine if our parents all volunteered 15 minutes a week. What could that do in our district? I want to show them that because I'm a full-time mom, working mom. I don't work from home anymore, I am hitting the streets, but 15 minutes matters. I want them to also know how to help their students, help them in the younger grades, help them prepare for college, help them, how do you fill out this FASFA? I know the district does that, but if we partnered with them, then you would have a more engaged student as well because the parent will be, "Hey, did you do this? Did you do that? Did you do that?" But if they don't know, they don't know to ask. So my critical accomplishments, the parent university as well as building a relationship so that with the, I'm sorry, city council so that we can be a bigger city and of course, student achievement. If we do all of that with the parents, our grades will go up and our equity, our gap will shrink, our achievement gap will shrink. Thank you.
And lastly, Dr. Singleton.
All right. Well, let me give you two or three, three if I have time. My accomplishment that I want to see is that right now as the district, we are on track of upward trajectory of our scholars and I commend our superintendent, Dr. Hudson, and the school board for that. Let me tell you where we are. Third grade reading, we was up eight percentage point. Fifth grade reading, we was up five percentage point. Eighth grade reading, nine percentage point. Math, third grade was clear percent, percentage upward. Fifth grade was clear percentage upwards. Eighth grade, we was at 17%. So those are some great accomplishments and I want to be a part of this board to not only improve, but just throw those numbers out the water in the next three years I'm on this board. That is my goal. In addition to pass, making sure that I advocate for the passing of this bond, to get you all new furniture in your classroom, to make sure in the wintertime, you're warm and make sure in the summertime, you're cool. That's just my plan, critical plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So the order for the next question. Got to make sure I shake it up good, y'all. Okay. We will start with Ms. Cabrera.
This will be my question this time. My question is, how can the governing board of CHISD help improve the district's image in the community?
Well, the governing board, we partner with, I mean, we partner with each other so there's six other votes that go along with me. We manage the superintendent, making sure that the super, we are aware of what the superintendent's goals are for the district and making sure that he or she, it's a he right now, is aware of how important it is to build that relationship with the city. Also, the image in the community. I'm not sure, I deal with people who have a good image of our school district, but I do believe partnering with them, having, inviting them into our home. Starting, one of the things I've said to the district for a number of years is, we need to have an email list where people can actually, businesses can sign up and receive communication from us, just like we send out, like parents get all the time. We need that because I think someone said, "Well, the community needs to know." Well, how else are they going to know if they don't have students in the district? Right? So we need to let them know. Send them an email, our newsletter, superintendent sends one out, sends one out every week. Why can't it go to them? So have them sign up. That helps our image. We get pictures of this student here doing all these great things, all of you guys doing all these great things, winning all of these awards. Don't keep it on Facebook, send it directly to the people you want to build a relationship with. And that entail will build a better community, a better image in our community. Thank you.
Okay, our next question, or our next candidate will be... Dr. Singleton.
Like those numbers I gave you where our scholars are on a upward trajectory in their academic, I think, I didn't see this a lot, I didn't see it a lot. With those numbers, we should have posted those numbers everywhere, over the hills and everywhere, how our scholars are excelling in the classroom. That creates a perfect image to our parents, to the community, to the merchants, that Cedar Hill ISD and the city of Cedar Hill is a place to bring your children to get a quality education. Thank you.
And lastly, we have Dr. Haygood.
Well, I'm all about image and I believe in that people definitely can judge you by what they see. And I think it's really up to the district as a whole as we partner with stakeholders, faculty and staff, students, and the community and community leaders and business leaders so that they can help us as well project this image of that we have scholars that are excelling, that we are having that PR out there where the people are talking about us in a good way. And that takes us getting out into the community as well, advertising the things that we're doing, bragging about it and letting them know, "Hey, we have something going on here as well and we're a big deal." I know that from the things that I've seen from my own children as well as their friends, I can see that, "Hey, this is quality education that they are getting here in Cedar Hill ISD." And that with that quality education, I'm always putting that on Facebook, social media and saying, "Hey, this is what my child has done and this is where they done it at, at Cedar Hill ISD, at the collegiate academy during the band." And so whatever it is, it takes us as parents as well as students and the staff and faculty at these campuses to let everyone hear that and to see that because image is everything and that's how you draw people to this district and to this community is by, is how everything looks. And we want them to make sure that they see what's really going on. And every student here is letting us know that now, "Hey, they have something to say, they have a voice and they're making it happen." I'm very impressed that there's a teen superintendent here in this district. I'm pushing for that in another district. So I want people to be able to see, "Hey, look what they're doing over here, we can do that too" because we have that going on. And so I believe it's very important that we can change that image by everyone coming together collectively to make that happen.
Thank you. Okay, y'all know the drill, shake up the bag. Our next question will be first answered by, again, Ms. Cabrera.
Okay, so this next question will be coming from me. Cedar Hill ISD has two bond propositions on the May 4th ballot to address the capital improvements, technology, and transportation. Please tell us if you support the bond proposition, why or why not?
Yikes. I absolutely support the bond. I have been a part of the LFC since it was created for the kids, is what I do, who I am, what we are. We need all of that and then some. I think actually the bond personally did not address enough stuff, but we had to make it a little bit more pleasing to the masses. So this is what it is. I, I can't say it enough that... I, I can't say it enough that it has to pass, y'all. Like it has to pass. It's raining in the buildings. You can act like it's raining. Our teachers and our students deserve so much more than that. We want achievements. Can it stop raining? I mean, that's basic because if it was raining in your house, you would go fix it. And because public education in Texas is funded by the state, we are underfunded all of the time and we have to do something about it. And, and people are gonna say something about our property taxes. I own a home. My taxes will be adjusted too. But our, our property value is associated with the quality of schools in our district. So we're tied together. We're in a relationship. And whether or not, if you're a senior, guess what? There's a cap for you too. There's, if you've got grandparents that live in the district, there's a cap. They won't be charged that. It has to pass. It has to pass. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Our next candidate will be Dr. Singleton.
I wholeheartedly support the bond. Matter of fact, when, when I looked at the bond proposal, the first thing I noticed that had me shouting was shouting was this. A piece of that bond is gonna make our schools, schools safe. You know, a lot of time when things happen, tragedy happened at our school, we, we up in arms. But, but a week later, when it do settle, we forget about it. And nothing that's, nothing to say about, look at today. How many, how many times have you heard about school safety on the television? It's a rarity unless something happens. But a piece of this bond is gonna make our schools safe. Another aspect I, I like about this bond I talked about earlier, it's gonna make sure that you, you, you warm in the wintertime, cool in the summertime. And guess what I like about it for our scholars? You walk into your school, let's say next year hypothetically, new furniture. See, I never forget when I was in school, when I walked in, like I said, we were in the poorest district. But there was a time I walked in, we had some new desks. All the other desk was written all on, crayons, etching to it with pencil. But we walked in one time with a new desk. I put myself in your place, just imagine in that bond. You go home and tell your parents, hey, we need to pass that bond because it's gonna give all school district, I mean, all schools. Our campus is new furniture, keep you safe. And that is paramount. And that is the most critical aspect, I think, in that bond with, with also, let me say it, also, technology. Technology is static change, is static environment. And so it's gonna make sure that our scholars are up to date with technology. And I, I love it. I love it, love it.
And lastly, Dr. Singleton. All right.
Well, I totally agree as well with everything that they have shared. As far as the bond, I know that when I've even heard about it and when it has come out a couple of times and it was different facets of the bond. But just to hear what this bond is proposing for the students here as well as the staff and faculty in Cedar Hill ISD, you almost want to think, well, why would you not do that for kids? Because it's not something that is gonna go for, I guess, in people's pockets and, and in their homes. It's for students. It's for students to be able to come into a classroom and say, hey, you know, I can sit at this desk. It's not gonna break. And I can sit it, you know, I can walk down the hallway and there's not leaks and, and mildew in the ceilings. It's the, the image again. It's the students who want to as well promote this district and say, hey, I, I'm proud to come to Cedar Hill ISD because we have facilities that are innovative, they, they're upgraded and they're modern and they're not outdated. But they also have technology and they have access to learning that can help them be able to compete outside of the district as well as with other districts because of what they're asked to do and what they need to do and be able to do. And have the tools available to them to do that. And so I am wholeheartedly for the bond as well and I do hope that the community as well support the bond.
Thank you. So those are all of our pre-written questions, but now we want to hear from all of you. We had a few community questions come in, from my email and from the community overall. And we will now have those questions asked and they'll be answered. So these are the first community question and then I'll draw a candidate.
Guess I'll go ahead first. How have you been, been involved or connected to the school district in the past two years?
Okay, so the first candidate to answer this question will be Dr. Hayden.
All right. Well, as I shared earlier, I have my own children who have come through the district. I have been definitely wearing a lot of hats as a educator myself in another district. But I have been involved in PTA from the elementary school all the way up to the high schools because I do understand the importance of parents being involved and parental involvement. But also I have volunteered hours of my time to make sure that other parents' children are being taken care of when it comes to volunteering in the classroom and, and just volunteering my time as far as even the concession stands on those very hot days. But I know that our Cedar Hill Army Band definitely always put together great food at those concession stands. So that wasn't too much of a problem. But also I've been involved in, at the high school level for the previous principals. I, they've had a leadership, parent leadership council. And so I have been able to add input in that capacity. And but I'm always trying to find ways to be involved in making sure that the students in Cedar Hill ISD are being taken care of.
Thank you. Our next candidate to answer this question will be Dr. Singleton.
All right. As for me, football games, I am an avid football, love football. Played, played it myself. So football games with the district, I have a member of the All-Pro Dad's. So I participate in events there. One of the major events I participated in, matter of fact, it was so great. Had me cutting a step. That was the showcase at the Performing Arts Center. They had the, I mean, the step show. They, I mean, that was, that was an awesome show. And I left out there, one of the colors just myself. It was, it was just that good, you know, different schools came and I was, I was, I was in awe. Also, I have a PTA event tomorrow. So I just love the district. And in addition to that, there was a winter showcase by a lot of elementary schools that were held in December. I was also a part of that as well.
Thank you. And lastly, Ms. Barbara Cook.
All right. I have been in the past two years, starting in 2022, we helped, it's not a district thing. We helped support the bond. We went out and put together the bond that started in 2022 that didn't pass. The bond that went out last May that didn't pass. That was a lot of my time. But I also volunteered with my son before he went to middle school at High Point Elementary and at the high school with volleyball, whether it was volleyball concession, whether it was band concession or band, I mean, basketball concession. I also, as I'm a lifetime PTA member, I was awarded that when I was PTA council president. And I'm a member of all of the PTA's, I mean, the PTA's have my children attend, not all of them. Oh, God. And I, that's a lot, y'all. That was a lot. But I also, as far as the involvement is concerned, anytime I'm called, I answer. So it's hard to put a name, you know, like if somebody says, Ayanna, Ms. Cook, we need you here. I'm there because it's not a title that moves me. I've been very active in this district without running for this position because the district needs more people that love the students, the teachers and the district as a whole. So I've been very busy.
Thank you.
Thank you. So our next question will first be answered by this bag is ready. This Dr. Hayden again.
So our next question, we're gonna go with this bag.
Okay, so as teacher retention is a statewide issue, what will you bring to the table to help the district with retaining teachers and recruiting quality teachers and staff?
That's a loaded question. But definitely, even as a school administrator, I've, I've been in the classroom before and as well as currently working with teachers. And it's almost like seasons that change and things that come about within the educational system as well as in the classroom. And the main thing I feel that will help is making sure that we are building relationships with teachers and we're taking care of teachers. And we are being intentional about what we do, how we address teachers' needs. Because they are paramount to educating our scholars. And so we need them. The way that we get quality teachers is being able to provide competitive salaries. But also making sure that they are coming into buildings that they feel safe and respected and that they are the experts in there. And so that we are able to help train them so that they can continue to do what they're doing. But also let them do the best for kids. Let them be teachers. Let them be educators. And also sometimes we have to listen to them and hear what they need and be able to address their needs. But the main thing is making sure that they know that we support them and that we are there for them and that we will continue to try and build great student achievement through what they do. Because it, it relies on them and what they're bringing to the classroom. And so I, I would love to make sure that we are also going to colleges and universities and we are recruiting at HBCUs and at Yale universities and Stanford universities and that we're getting those quality teachers here to come and teach our scholars.
Thank you. Our next candidate will be Dr. Singleton.
All right. I love that question though. From the last Texas Education Agency report card for our, our district that I looked at, our teacher turnover rate was twenty, twenty-eight point eight percent. And that's, that's, that's pretty high. But I was happy, well, I'm not gonna say happy, but when I also looked at the Solo, Lancaster and Dunkinville, their turnover rate was in the high thirty percentile range. So we, we was a lot better than them. But my point is, we got to reduce our teachers' workload. Everybody talk about we got a state teacher crisis, shortage. What can we do? What can we do? I never hear anyone talk about two things. Let's be, find a way to reduce their, their workload. One way, one way I advocate is that we can scale back some of the, some of the testing that we do. We, we test our students over and over and over and over and over and then some more just so they can take one test, one, one or two tests. Right now, as a matter of fact, testing going on now. Also, we got to have mentors for our new teachers. And we got to offer them respect and support. I did a survey when I was in grad school on this very, very topic, what do teachers need? And, and one of the first thing came up is we need to be respected by our administrators and we need to be supported. And I think as a district, I don't know how we, how we're doing it now, but if we're not, we need to show them respect. We can offer them incentives. We can offer them stipends. And another thing we can do is I, I'll be down. We need to have a system where we grow, grow our own teachers. Like for example, if any of you are, are high school seniors, we need to have a program where we would incent you to go to college, get your degree, get certified, and then come back to this district. The greatest teachers are the ones who, who are connected to the community. I think we need to implement that program to retain good teachers.
Thank you.
All right. I'm trying to remember the question. How do we incentivize, wait, how do we bring more quality teachers? Okay, how do we do that? Well, first, we already passed the Vator. So we are competitively paying our teachers. So we'll have to check to see what our retention rate is this year as it has been in the past. Because in the past, we were losing teachers to go do the exact same job across the street or in another district. So that's the first thing. I think we might have stopped that bleeding. Now, how do we get more qualified teachers? I believe it's a twenty eight, a twenty sixty twenty. You have a top twenty percent of your teachers are superior. Then you have this sixty percent that are really good and you're trying to move them somewhere. I don't think we have that a strong sixty percent yet because our teachers are young. They're not as experienced as we need them to be. Maybe go look back into some of the teachers that left that were really good quality teachers and maybe interview them and see if they'll come back to us. That might help level out our, our level of experience because that's why we have too many to mentor and not enough mentors. And then that bottom twenty, sometimes we gotta move them out, you know, they ain't gotta go home. We gotta kind of move them out of the bottom and put some more people in the pipeline. I think that with our pay and then respecting them always. I'm a teacher advocate. I think teachers need better insurance. On the board, I'm gonna say, hey, let's start a committee to go look for some different insurance because we don't have to use T E A or T R S or whatever that's called. We don't have to use it. So find something because we gave them a pay. If it's gonna take away with some insurance, then what pay raise did we really give them? So that's what I think.
Thank you. And I realize, I never explained to everybody what this is. This is their one-minute card because you know we gotta keep them on their toes.
And that's the red bag. Okay, it's Dr. Singleton. All right, our next question is.
School districts have had to cut many programs.
Please, we can't hear you.
School districts have had to cut many programs, reduce staff and been unable to make needed upgrades as a school board member. What action, if any, would you take to adequately fund our school?
Okay. From that question, to liberate some of the budget constraints, the first thing I would do is look at open positions in the district. Before I look at cutting staff or anyone else, let's put a freeze on those open positions. Because if those positions are currently open and we're still functioning, then we don't need those positions. So that would be my, my first thing. The second thing that I would look at is those programs that not tie directly or impact student academic achievement. And that would save money for the district. And all that is budgeted into the funds.
Our next question will be answered by, or the same question will be answered by Dr. Hayden.
This bag just is not like you.
So, can you read that question again for me?
School districts have had to cut many programs, reduce staff and been unable to make, to make needed upgrades as a school board member. What action, if any, would you take to adequately fund our school?
So some of the things that you would have to do if you do not have bond money and your bond proposal did not pass is to become very creative. And some of those things can come with partnering with businesses in which that they give grants to take care of certain programs and they will fund certain programs. You could also look at trying to bring in revenue from different ways, from real estate. Buying land, purchasing land and building on that and selling it somehow to others so that you can bring money in as well. Most of the money in the, the district budget is for salaries for teachers and, and looking at the salaries for administrators as well and just kind of looking at, hey, where can we absorb some of these job responsibilities and duties? And with absorbing that, then you can utilize that money and allocate it in different ways. And so I would say that the best way to really address when there are programs that need to be cut is you have to really be intentional as well as make critical decisions on why you're cutting those programs and if it is benefiting students academically as well as how it's benefiting the community. But also making sure that it's just not wasted funds within these certain programs that you have. You want to definitely pour money into those programs that are really benefiting our students academically as well as if they're preparing our students for career, college and any kind of life readiness. So you want to make sure you focus, you know that with those funds.
Thank you. And now Ms. Barbara Cook.
Well, I sat on the, guys asked a question a little ago, a little while ago, something else that I've done. I sat on the budget committee where after the first bond failed, we had to go and say we're gonna cut four million dollars out of our budget, the district budget. I, it's ours because I'm part of it, right? That was the worst thing I ever had to do. My anxiety was on ten. Because we were already working on a shoestring budget and to cut, they were trying to cut sports, certain sports things. They were trying to shut different activities. And I do what I do for the kids and I want you to achieve high in your scores because unfortunately that's how we're graded. But I didn't want you to miss out on what else school is made for. So what would we cut? So what would we cut? That's hard. Like, it was hard, it was hard. So I saw, I'm sorry, it was just so hard. Teachers, we can't cut people. We can't cut people because we still have students we have to take care of. We have to keep teachers. We did level out and move students around. We did take the money and cut some of the top down. We don't have as many assistant superintendents. The district did everything possible. I hope we don't have to do that again because that is the hardest thing ever. Imagine your mother saying, oh, we can't buy bread anymore. We can't buy milk anymore. That's what happens when you cut out of a district. It is our district because we don't have fat. We're very lean. Okay, thank you.
Our next question will first be answered by Ms. Really Good This Time. Dr. Singleton.
Which way are we going, this way?
This way.
Okay, so, okay. So considering all the new neighborhoods being built in Cedar Hill, we can expect a lot of new families. What plans could help encourage them to choose CHISD for their child?
Well, very simple. Promote and disseminate all the good stuff we're doing here in the district because we are doing a lot of good things. Our achievement, academic achievement, as I stated earlier, is on the rise. Let's continue to put that out there to our community. Because when people move into our district, to the city, you know what parents, first thing parents look for a lot of these parents? They look at the school system. Right now, our rating, the last rating that came from Texas Education Agency, we was rated a C, which in the seventieth percentile range. But then I looked at something. In 2019, we was rated a B, which is the recognized level. And I think that we can get back to that B or higher level. And I think I am the person to help this board and the superintendent to get us back to that B level. And once we get that B level, it's on for our parents. It's on. They're gonna want to come here from all over, not just Cedar Hill, DeSoto, Duncanville. We may be starting to get some of their students. But with all this apartment and homes, a lot of homes are going up as well. And it's gonna add to our district. But promote the good stuff.
Thank you. Next we have...
Dr. Hayden.
I'm so sorry.
With all the families and the new developments that's coming up in the neighborhoods and then within the communities, I feel as well is definitely promoting what Cedar Hill is all about and Cedar Hill ISD as well. When I, sometimes when I get the mail, I don't always get the mail, it's usually my husband doing it. And thank you for supporting me. But I saw a postcard and I get a lot of postcards from different districts as well, like Duncanville and DeSoto and Mansfield. So we get these postcards of what is being offered in those districts. And when I saw one from Cedar Hill, I'm like, look at that! So we have to make ourselves known. And we can do that because families, they are looking to see, hey, what are these schools offering so that I can enroll my kids into these schools? And when we moved here 10 years ago, after my husband retired from the Army, we moved into Lake Ridge. And over there, I'm like, okay, what school is everybody going to over here in this Lake Ridge area? And many of them were going to private schools and charter schools. I'm like, what's wrong with Cedar Hill ISD? And enrolled our kids into Cedar Hill ISD and they have got a quality education from Cedar Hill ISD. And so I can promote that, my kids can promote that as well. But that's what we have to do is promote Cedar Hill ISD for these new families that are coming in and continue to advertise that. We may have to get on to some commercials, but definitely those postcards are making a difference. So I would say continue to promote what Cedar Hill has to offer for these families.
Thank you.
Can we get the question repeated?
Okay, no problem. Okay, so the question is, considering all the new neighborhoods being built in Cedar Hill, we can expect a lot of new families. What plans could help encourage them to choose CHISD for their child?
Okay, the plans that can encourage them to choose CHISD. Unfortunately, they will initially look to see what our grade is from the T E A, right? We have to be able to overcome that. How do we overcome that? We, how we need, and she mentioned this, but a video of some sort with our students, like you guys, talking about what's inside of the district. Because it's one thing about a real estate agent telling them what this school really is because they want them to buy this house. But it's something that is more powerful when it comes from you all. So having students tell the story, having alumni tell the story. Because alumni is very powerful or they're ready to go to college. Not just what the test says, yes, they can go, but how did they succeed in college? What did they have to overcome in college? Let the story be told by the people who actually benefited directly from CHISD. I benefit indirectly because of my children. But my children benefit directly from everything that we pour into them. So how do we get these families? We talk to the real estate agents. We say, hey, real estate agent, show them this. Send them to this page. Let them meet our school district where we're at, at the front door.
Thank you. Our next question will be first answered by Ms. Really Good This Time.
We're gonna say it one more time.
Okay, Dr. Hayden.
Okay, so this next question is coming from me. Is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school board for Cedar Hill?
As far as a particular issue, I would just say that being able to be a part of the work that's being done here at Cedar Hill. And not so much of the issue, but making sure that Cedar Hill ISD is also a premier school district. Because I currently work in a district that offers a lot of things that I know that Cedar Hill as well offers and can offer. And so I would like to bring those ideas and those innovative ideas to here because these students here, scholars here, staff here, faculty here, I know that they can as well excel and be a premier district. And so the issue is making sure that Cedar Hill ISD is put on the map. Because there are diverse students here that are excelling and I need others as well to see that because I'm always bragging on my own. And so I would like to as well be a part of being able to brag on what we have to offer here.
Thank you. Okay, our next question, the same question, will be answered by...
Well, I think I have a lot to offer the district to help our students to reach their full potential. The last fourteen years, I have been a member of the Cedar Hill Best Board, which is the Beautification and Sustainability Board. Some of you in Cedar Hill High School, you might be familiar with we having annual cleanups. I know some of y'all have been involved in that. Guess who started that?
You did.
Yes. That's my baby. I was the architect of the Beautiful Little Campaign. Matter of fact, next Saturday, we have a cleanup. I started all that fourteen years ago. I presented to the best board, they ran with it. And now it has become an annual event within our city. I'm very creative. I know and I recognize the challenges that y'all face. And I think I am the person to help you unlock your full potentials. I'm asking the parents to vote for me during the early election on May 5th. And let's continue, May 4th, excuse me, May 4th, I'm thinking about the primary. May 4th, to help me work with our superintendent, work with this marvelous board so we can continue to make our students excel academically and prepare them for a great career, college or the military. That is my goal. And you know what? We're gonna do it.
The question again, I'm sorry, I listened, I'm sorry. What's the question?
Is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school board for Cedar Hill?
The issue would be making Cedar Hill a premier district. That, I can't say there's one thing because it all encompasses one. But holding our district responsible for being good stewards of the funds that we will hopefully get when this bond passes. Because when I was out there campaigning for the bond, people were like, they're just gonna steal the money. Well, you know what? I put my money where my mouth was and I said I'm gonna run to make sure that we are doing what we said we were gonna do with the bond. Because people have this misnomer that we're going to do something with this money. And I'm like, well, I'm gonna, I want to be here so that I can make sure that we do what we say we're gonna do. We wrote it down, now let's follow through with it. And if we're not following through with it, if something happens, if the price goes up on something, we need to make sure we're transparent and we communicate that with our constituents, our voters, our supporters, so we won't be tagged as non-truth tellers in the future. So the issue is making our district the best it can possibly be with the most positive and most shining light that we can put on it. Because we always talk about the bad, we just need to shine on what is good in our district.
Thank you. Okay, I think if it's all right with everybody here, we should let Ms. Carrera Cook go first because she's had the wrong end of this bag this entire time.
Let me take some audio.
My people in Africa.
Okay, so a lot of y'all said something about like helping the community, bringing in more families, making sure everybody is, their focus is, you know, on the prize. You know, because the goal for all the kids that go here is graduation. If it's not elementary graduation, fifth grade graduation, eighth grade graduation or, you know, the big, the big, the big three. Graduation, graduation. So I just want to know, what will y'all do with y'all kids? Because y'all speak about your kids like they're your rock. I get that. So how would you, you know, bring in families, make sure they're active members and help them become like more involved in student education? Because when I tell people I'm included in this, I just told my god grandfather I was included in this. He was like, oh, where you going? I didn't even know. So I just wanted to know, how would you communicate this with all the kids around you? The kids you see every day and the kids you say that you support and love?
Trying to get the question, so I'm gonna come with it.
Yeah, just to say, just sorry. Oh, you want me to repeat it? Okay, how would you help bring in families, active members of the district or help them become more involved in student education?
Parent university. Parent university, now we have, it's a, it's a, it's more of a give, meaning the district is giving information and I think it needs to be more applied. So we have a curriculum that is based on whatever, and I spoke on this a little while ago, but I'll give you a little bit more of what I think. A little bit more of whatever that is. Like, whatever that is, is education. Let's teach you this math, how to become a parent who is involved with the extracurriculars. How to become a parent that when the phone rings from the district, you're not afraid to answer it because you think your child is in trouble. Because we need to make sure that we build that connection with that teacher in the beginning and let the parent know we are partners. Sometimes nowadays, these parents are like, my child is always right. Pause. I don't think my child is always right. You respect adults, you respect adults. We need to make sure parents understand that. Some parents just didn't get it and it's okay. Everybody wasn't raised with a certain thing. But parents need to be empowered to partner with the teachers. Teachers need to be empowered to partner with parents. We need to be able to tell you, hey, it's okay for you to speak your mind, but be respectful. It needs to, parents need to know, it's okay for you to be disgruntled about something, but follow the process. Talk to the teacher, talk to that principal that's above that teacher, then talk to the principal, then go to the school board. Don't run to me first because guess what? There's nothing I can do, I'm gonna send it right back down the line. So teaching them the process will empower parents to be more engaged in our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate will be... Dr. Singleton.
Well, I actually have done the research on that. And one of the things I found out why parents are not actively involved in their student education is this. They don't feel welcome coming to our campus. That's what the research says. And we have to do as administrators, as teachers, as office staff, we have to do a better job of making parents feel welcome when they come to their school. The same way with students. Y'all agree, let me know if you agree with me. When a student knows that a teacher cares about them and cares about their education, their value is half over. And those students are going to be more engaged in their academic when they know that the teacher loved them and they cared for them. It's the same concept with our parents. We have to show parents love when they step foot in our schools. I had the same experience without the teacher. It was a low parental environment. Here's what I did and it worked. I became a partner with our P T A. I didn't see our P T A as a separate entity. I saw the P T A as an entity that we're going down the same road together. Different, different, different roads, but we all met at the same, same crossroad. And when I partnered with the P T A, guess what happened? My parental environment probably went up about three hundred percent because I started looking at parents as a partner, not as a nuisance who's coming to our school. So we got to respect our parents and be more inviting when they come to our campuses.
Thank you. And lastly, Dr. Hayden.
I agree, again, everything that they said. And so this is what I would say about getting parents to be engaged in what the scholars are doing here at the high school, at any campus, elementary, middle school, the collegiate, all of it, is to reach out to them to let them know that they are essential and they're vital in this process as the students are going through their days at school. One thing I did even as a elementary school principal was I was always trying to find ways that I can get parents involved. I know that I had working parents, so I took that into consideration as far as when we did programs. And so there was programs that we would put on as much as possible so that those parents can come and see their kids shine. At the high school level, even what we're doing now, we have committees where that we can find ways to get parents to come to the high school to get involved because we know that after students get into a certain grade level and age, that they kind of stop showing up. But we have to empower them and we have to encourage them to stay involved with them. Because we know that though that we are here trying to educate their children, we need to partner with them. And we also need to share stories and allow them to come and share stories. Invite them to class projects or class time in which they can come and see their students shine and excel and so that they can understand what they're doing and why they're doing what they're doing. But to have them as a cheerleader. Because as teachers and administrators, we're cheerleaders for those students all the time. But we need to encourage those parents to come in there and be cheerleaders as well. But it's also just making sure that it's available for them and that we're working with their time. Because we appreciate their time and we know that they are entrusting those kids into our care when they leave those homes and come into those campuses and those buildings. And so that's what I would say as far as making sure that we're doing that.
Thank you. And I believe that is all of our community questions. I did not mention this at the beginning, yes, I did use Charlie's in my head, not my heart, but our candidate Shamega Austin was not able to make it. But we will try to figure out a way to make sure that she gives y'all the answers to these questions. Thank you so much for coming tonight and thank you to everybody who participated in this forum. Although we're not able to answer all community questions tonight, our board candidates will receive the additional questions to answer. And those answers will be sent out to the CHISD community next week. If you'd like to know more about each candidate, you can access their information on our CHISD board candidate page. Early voting begins April 22nd through April 30th and Election Day is May 4th. We encourage everyone to get out and vote. Have a great evening.